Call this meeting no more. City of Groves, notice of a regular meeting of the city council. City Council chamber, Groves City Hall, January eighth, twenty twenty four, five P M. Call rise for prayer and pledge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Father, we pray this for this city council meeting tonight. Please give the city members, council members wisdom and the guidance as they deliberate on the issues before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for your benefit and your glory. We ask this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Local city clerk.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Mayor President McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember Dugus.
Here.
Councilmember Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember Kenny is here.
I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item four, we approve the minutes of the December eighteenth, twenty twenty three city council meeting and joint public hearing. Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the December eighteenth, twenty twenty three city council meeting and joint public hearing. Do you have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Broten, McAdams, aye. Councilmember Kenny is aye. Councilmember Oliver, aye. Councilmember Dugus, aye. Motion passes. Item five will be reports. Do you have any reports today?
Mr. Mayor, this evening I'd like to talk a little bit about Operation Desert Storm. On January seventeenth, nineteen ninety one, Operation Desert Shield came to an end when the air campaign of Operation Desert Storm began. Task force Normandy consisted of nine Apache helicopters from the U S Army Hundred and First Aviation Regiment, Hundred and First Airborne Division air assault, accompanied by four Air Force M H fifty-three Pavlov Special Operations helicopters opened fire at zero two three six Baghdad time on the seventeenth of January. After their twenty-seven Hellfire missiles destroyed Iraqi radar sites, the Apaches followed with one hundred, hundred seventy rockets that knocked down associated anti-aircraft guns. This operation created a twenty mile gap in the enemy's air defense network, opening a corridor through which U S Air Force F-15 fighters, supported by F-one-eleven Ravens, raced into Iraqi airspace virtually unopposed. Operating almost with impunity, U S and allied forces pummeled Iraqi positions and supply lives. Finally, on the twenty-fourth of February, the ground war began. Kicking off, kicking off the main attack in bad weather, the Eighteenth Airborne Corps quickly made an end run around the open right flank of the Iraqi army. In other words, we went like this, we went from two sides at once. Pretty awesome stuff. Kicking, uh, simultaneously, simultaneously, the U S and allied forces in the east directly attacked towards Kuwait City. The Tiger Brigade pushed north from Saudi Arabia through the blazing Kuwaiti oil fields set on fire by the retreating Iraqis. By mid-afternoon on the first day of battle, elements of the Hundred and First and the Eighty-Second Airborne Division were deep into Iraq. Early successes by the, allowed the Seventh Corps to begin its attack. Ahead of, ahead of schedule, early in the afternoon on the twenty-fourth, U S soldiers from the First Infantry Division overrun Iraqi positions within a few hours. The Iraqi troops began surrendering in droves. The next day, the First Armored Division quickly crushed the Twenty-Sixth Infantry Division of the Iraqi Army as the Seventh Corps pivoted to the east. The Twenty-Fourth Infantry Division, heavy armored, moved northward, meeting sporadic resistance from demoralized Iraqi troops. Linking up with the Hundred and First Battle Positions, the Twenty-Fourth Infantry Division moved two hundred miles north to the Euphrates River Valley by noon on the twenty-sixth, blocking a major Iraqi supply route. The battles of Desert Storm soon wound down against crumbling resistance. With the Seventh Corps poised to crush the remainder of the Republican Guard units, only the declaration of a cease fire saved the Iraqis. Within one hundred hours, U S and allied ground forces in Iraq and Kuwait decisively defeated a battle hardened enemy. During air and ground operations, U S and allied forces destroyed over three thousand tanks, fourteen hundred armored personnel carriers, and twenty-two hundred artillery pieces. This was achieved at a cost to the United States of ninety-six soldiers killed in action. The aftermath of that was, with Kuwait liberated, the United States forces immediately turned to humanitarian missions. They assisted the Kuwaitis in reoccupying their country and helped them to begin the long process of rebuilding. The American instrument of war became a force for peace. The long struggle of reconstruction was just beginning as the most victorious U S military and coalition units headed home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Any other reports? I wish Kevin was here. Say if he had anything.
I'm not going there.
Any other reports, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Move on to citizen comments. Any citizen comments? Yes, sir. Please approach the podium. We'll need your name and address.
My name is Donald Evans. I live at twenty-six ten Second Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Okay, I'm a lifelong citizen of this city. And recently, I've gotten some water bills that were twice the amount as normal. And so I acquired with the water department. And I was told that either I'm using more water than normal or I had a leak on my side. So I went ahead and I, by the way, I'm a certified industrial by-pitter for thirty years. So I ran a seven-day leak test on my side of the meter. And the results were that I don't have, I'm not leaking a drop. So I went ahead and I ran a flow test, a hundred gallon flow test on, on the city's meter. And it, it's calibrated properly. Now, I can't prove this part, but my wife and I live there alone, just me and her now. Our kids are grown and gone. We no longer have a swimming pool back there. And these bills are higher than when we did have kids in the house and when we did have a swimming pool back there. And so it begs the question, why, why is the bill doubled? So I called the water department again, well, they sent someone out to read the meter and instructed me to call them back that day at three. And I was told that everything was aligned on their end. So I went ahead and put a question on social media on Groves Community Chat Group. And the response was, to me, was overwhelming. I had over a hundred comments of people that had the same problem I'm having. And they're all saying the same thing, that they're getting stonewalled and told that everything's aligned and it must be something they're doing, that they must be using more water than normal. Some of these folks have actually paid out of their pocket to hire a plumber and come out and check for leaks. And everybody here knows that plumbers aren't cheap. So with all that being said, I guess my question is, because a lot of the comments were saying that they've, they've tried to get somewhere with this, they've tried to get this on the agenda in front of the city council and try to find out, you know, where lies the problem? And so I guess my question is, when, when can we and how can we get this on the agenda and looked at and, you know, have a transparent conversation about what's really going on? Instead of shining people on and blaming it on them, talking in circles is what's going on, is what I'm saying. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir.
Any other citizen comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Can I give you this?
Yes, sir.
I'm Kirk Hinden. My home address is fifty-four thirty Mockingbird Lane. But I'm calling, I'm coming here today because I go to First Baptist Church in Groves. We're having the same issue with the water. And, uh, okay, Chris, uh, I'm looking at the history of our water bills for the last twenty-two months. And the last twenty months, we, after the whole twenty months, was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred gallons. That was average of seventy-eight, seventy-five a month. Our average bill was seventy-nine ninety-six, and we have four meters, so this is just a meter for a certain part of the building. Uh, the last two months, uh, our average consumption was five hundred thousand four hundred. That is, the high month was three hundred and sixteen thousand gallons. Now seventy-five, seventy-eight, seventy-five versus three hundred and sixteen thousand, quite a bit of difference. That is ten thousand five hundred and thirty-six gallons a day, four hundred and thirty-nine gallons a hour, and seven point three gallons a minute. So I did a test on the float valve. We had a company come out. We paid them three hundred dollars. They had two master plumbers come out. They couldn't find anything. They said one of our little floats in the toilet might be leaking. So I went to that valve and I tested it. I turned it on full blast. And it was four point seven five gallons a minute. So even if that thing is running full blast, twenty-four, seven, thirty days, there's no way. And we're getting the same response. It's, we're leak, uh, you know, there's something wrong with y'all. We're using too much. You know, we're all over that facility quite often. And, uh, you know, we had a, we even had a toilet leak in moving down. And so, just like y'all, like this man said, take it serious on this thing. We're having a hassle with this. And, you know, now we have a bill of four thousand, four thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars. Okay? And the month before was two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. That's quite a bit of difference from seventy-nine dollars. So we got a problem. And I'd like for somebody to give us an answer other than it's our fault. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Dugus, when you're done, I'd like to pass that over to the Senate. Do you have any other citizen comments?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
My name is Ruth Scott. I live at thirty seventeen Berry, Evanee. And I'm not a speaker. But I, I do stand up for one other leak in.
Ma'am, could you come speak with my brothers? We can hear you.
Two, three years ago, I was overcharged a couple of times, real high rates in my water bill. I called, I came down, I complained, I asked for help, and I was at no room. I got on the Groves website and I asked if anybody else was having this problem, that we need to get together and sort of first-class action lawsuit. I was at no room on that. Um, so I'm standing here today. I don't think it's right, as far as I'm concerned, it's my personal opinion, but it's licensed and still, and it's wrong. Something needs to be done to help people. And I'm hoping that y'all come up with something to make it right and, and do something to help people. This Groves is not that big. You don't have to be an accounting manager to look at a spreadsheet and say, okay, this is resident property. There's something wrong here. Look how high this bill is, three hundred dollars. I live in a twelve hundred square foot home. There's only two people in it, me and my daughter. There's something wrong here. And we can't, we really can't do anything about it. And then we have to put, when you pay for it on a credit card, you're paying that interest, and it takes a while to pay it all. It's wrong. Just that simple, it's wrong. So I am asking y'all to do something about this. Thank you.
Yes, citizen comments?
Yeah, my name is Chris Booker. I live at thirty-one twenty-six Berry. And I was just gonna, um, iterate what the previous commenters have. We've had a water bill that has just been steady, forty-five to fifty-five dollars every month, maybe sixty-five in the summer if I was watering. And starting with, I guess the bill was read in July, but we paid August. It has tripled. And it stayed about the same. And, I mean, I called, then they hadn't estimated since February. Then it started slipping down, like got down to one forty. And I thought, well, okay, maybe it's just catching up from it was estimated. So, and it's been a lot of debit, but then in December I got one two hundred, over two hundred dollars. So I called them out again. They say, you know, everything looks good. I'm one of those that called the plumber and got a plumber to come out and do a pressure test on my line. And he says, everything is good. I came down and talked to Mr. Oslie, who agreed to work with me, get a new meter. And if that happened, he said that he would work with me. I want to say that. And I was just kind of here to listen, but it seems to be a widespread problem. And, um, I mean, I'm fortunate. I can pay the bill. Some of these people on fixed incomes, that's a hardship for them. So that's kind of why I'm up here speaking. But, uh, I appreciate everything y'all do. And I had no issues. I just want it fixed. I want to pay. Our average consumption was between fifteen hundred and twenty-five gallons a month. And starting in August, it went to nineteen thousand, twelve thousand, twelve thousand, nineteen thousand, fifteen thousand. And then they read it for five days in December. And I had used, if I read the handwritten thing right, like about ten thousand gallons in four days. It's just me and my wife, and we weren't even home for half of those days. So that's all I got. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Thirty-one in the lobby? Any citizen comments? Last call. All right. Thank you. Move on. Item six, uh, here to deliberate on a presentation from State Representative Chris Emmanuel concerning the city of Groves, House District Twenty-two in the state of Texas. Uh, no motion required, information only. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Let us have it.
I am, uh, State Representative Chris Emmanuel for District Twenty-two, which is, uh, encompasses Port Arthur, Beaumont, Chief China, Noma, a little bit of Needham, all of Groves and all of Fort Natchez. Um, I can't give you a, a Groves address, but I will say it once upon a time, maybe about eight years ago, I did have a Groves address. Uh, but I still do fight for Groves. Uh, it has been an honor to represent you all. Um, and the hardest thing for me, being a representative, going from a staffer is talking about myself. So you're talking about other people and their accomplishments. Um, one of the things that is important to me that I did both for, unfortunately didn't pass, was more local control. I know that one of the hardest things, just being a state representative, is being able to do things, um, and not actually being able to do them. And that's something that is very important to me. We, we made sure that we got money to Lamar University, to our, uh, mental health departments within Baptist Hospital. We've gotten between myself and Speaker Dave Bean, about a billion dollars to the southeast Texas area to make sure that we're doing such things as flood mitigation. Make sure that we're doing such things, making sure our schools are funded, our local universities funded. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time to get one of our bills out, which would have helped our local colleges, which would have given about half a billion dollars of endowment to Lamar University, which is very important to us. Um, but it's very important to me because especially listening to a lot of people here, we often talk about work. Um, but one thing that we forget about is, is that we can support our local industry, but making sure that we're supporting the people who work for those industries, from hospitals to teachers to the industrial area. And that's something that's really important to me, is making sure that we're creating strong businesses, but also creating environments where our citizens feel as though they can pay for and put money in savings and also feel pride about being from this area, which is very vitally important to me. Um, I always kind of make this joke. Uh, there was, uh, an area within Houston that was going to get about two hundred million dollars in, uh, mental health prevention. And when the budget finally came out, we got about a hundred and forty-nine million of it. They were like, you took a hundred and forty-nine million dollars of my mental health money? And I said, I told you, I will always take money if it benefits southeast Texas. I think what's, uh, what a lot of people don't realize is that we are considered, uh, more of a rural suburban area. And that can be a downfall and a benefit. It can be a benefit because of the fact of there are more rural areas in Texas than there are urban or city areas than there are in Texas. And there's a lot of different programs that I voted for and supported that would bring money, such as the broadband, such as people being able to farm if they have property. And a lot of people think that doesn't deal with us, but it actually does. Because if you have any kind of, uh, self-sustaining farmer, if you're doing anything when it comes to, uh, like a farmer's market, you're growing something, you're putting something on your property, you're selling that. Well, in a lot of places, you can't do that until we pass that with the constitutional amendments. And that was really important for me, for us to be not only sustainable, to make sure that we're explaining to people that you can no longer forget about our areas like ours, rural suburban areas. And one thing that I always keep in mind is that, um, with our area, within our area, southeast Texas, we have one of the largest populations of people within a rural suburban area or within southeast Texas because we have a large concentration of that. And that's something that I try to very much remember. Even though, again, it did pass, uh, I am a believer in local control. I don't believe that the state should have full autonomy to tell cities what they can and cannot do. And that's something that I think is very important and something that I continue to move forward with. One bill that I'm proud of that was one of the joint authors on, which passed this, uh, before September, but went into law September the first. Now, as of September the first, whenever there is a hurricane, and I say whenever, because we will have another hurricane. Um, one of the biggest problems, and I hope I'm not offending anyone and exciting too many people when I say this, is the biggest problem is the federal government. And that is because we tell them what our disasters are, tell them how much money we need. And then they say, okay, we'll give you some money. And then that can take two, three, four, five, six years or even longer. And we don't have that time nor should we ever have to wait for that. So now what happens is, is as of September the first of last year, when there is a hurricane, we are able to go to, uh, the county commissioners' court and tell them, okay, we got this much money allotted to us from FEMA. The county commissioners' court can then take that to a bank. And they can say, look, we have a half a billion dollars or half of it, whatever the amount of it is. And based upon this, the county's credit score, and then based upon what people are saying, we can now go to a bank and we can say, this amount of money coming in, this is our need. Will you give us a vote for that? And that would be something that we can look at, whether, if there's an interest rate, how much that interest rate is, to make sure that we're having a competitive interest rate. It'll make it where it'll be a lot easier for us, easier for us, excuse me, for us to start building back sooner. And I think every one of you on council and everyone here knows, the biggest problem is when people are trying to rebuild their homes and we're trying to rebuild this city. Waiting two years or more is not devastating. It's disrespectful. We're just as important as Houston, as Dallas, as Austin, as San Antonio, as El Paso, as any city. And this is going to give us a real big leg up of making sure that we are able to start rebuilding back better. We're also, um, that passes, um, because we kind of had to go county by county. Uh, we got Beaumont's Hotel Occupancy Tax Act, which estimated could bring about a hundred and four, sorry, a hundred and three point nine to about a hundred and four or more million dollars. So that means anytime someone comes here to stay in a hotel, Beaumont will get their hotel occupancy tax back. So some people are going to say, well, what does that have to do with helping us? I have a really big belief in, if we are making sure that every part of the county that can get help, gets help, that means every bit of taxpayer dollars that we don't need for that part of the county can be trickled down to us. And I think that's vastly important. Because if you're going to be working here, rebuilding people's homes, then one place we know you, we can tell you to stay is in Beaumont. Because we know that that's going to give money back, which means the county has to spend less money on Beaumont because that money can be spent towards Groves and other places. So all of these areas are important to me. And one area that a lot, and I kind of touched on this, one area is important is, um, my godchildren were raised here in Groves. And one area that is important is, we often fail to look at industry. And a lot of our citizens here work in industry. And they pay their bills by working for those people. And what's really important to me is making sure that we are not so laser focused on forgetting the fact that our citizens need jobs. And they need to be able to pay their bills. And personally for me, I hate to use that because sometimes it becomes a seniority. I really believe in the timeframe of when I was growing up, when people were able to save money, but they were also able to take their family on one, well, really two or three vacations a year and feel comfortable. And that's really important to me. That's something that I always think about in how I vote is, what is one of the driving horses in our area as far as how people make their money? How are they able to pay their taxes? So that we can help them move forward. I know that inflation has messed a lot of things up. And no offense to anyone, I'm not taking sides. I do know that, uh, city water bills are just something that, and electric bills and everything that we cause people heartache. And I don't want to say heartburn, but heartache. Um, and I think that we have to continue, and I know you all have, just working for the former state representative, being in this position for almost twenty years. It's a vitally important position. And I will say, I do not envy you all being on the city council. Um, I love working for the state. Um, but I look forward to continuously making sure that southeast Texas is an area that is, one, not forgotten, and, two, is considered the jewel of Texas. Because I always tell people in a joking way, people always say, so goes Texas, so goes the nation. And I always say, so goes southeast Texas. So goes Texas, so goes the nation. And so when it comes to, if you all or anyone in the audience or anyone that is watching this, please, um, feel free to always come to my office to reach out to me to let me know what you think needs to be done. Because I, I, I try Because I, I, I try to make sure that I am not passing legislation that I think is correct, but what is needed for our community. I think that is an area, uh, when it comes to state and federal officials, we too often, we know too much. And I don't want to be a part of that problem. Um, so I appreciate you all giving me this time. And again, if there's anything else that I could answer, if there's any questions when it comes to budgets or anything that I could answer while I'm here or get my staff to reply to you with the exact amounts, I am very happy to do that. And I thank you all so very much and humbly thank you for allowing me to, uh, just kind of talk about what I've done, what I look forward to doing, what my stance is on it being, and for everyone in the audience to just listen to me, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for coming and thank you for reaching out to us. And we really appreciate you showing up and, 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 you know, being known. At least, uh, my first time here to see Wayne. So I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad that you're, uh, available and we're willing to come and speak to you. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll say this lastly, one thing people often don't think about, um, the way our area is connected. If we lose one part of our county, just one part of our county, it is the destruction of the entire county. We cannot be a thriving county without Groves, without Port Neches, without Needeland, without Port Arthur or Beaumont. And, uh, one thing I will say to you all is you all have done an amazing job of making sure that you have reached out, that you have done your due diligence to keep Groves in the forefront. And I very much appreciate that because that is not the sentiment throughout the state. People do not always reach out, and I thank you all for that. And I know that it is not the easiest job and it is not the most, uh, thankful job. But I appreciate you all because in a funny way, you make my job easier because I literally am able to say, hey, city council has talked with their citizens, my citizens, and they're like, that's not going to work for them. So I really do appreciate that and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for saying that you're not going to forget about this year.
I can't because no offense, I had to pay the water bills and you're not. So thank you so much and I appreciate you all. And please let me know if there's ever anything that me or my office can be one of my staffers is here. But please, uh, let us know. We are in the atrium building on the third or fourth floor. But anytime, please reach out to myself or my staff and we'll do everything humanly possible. And I promise to you all, everyone here and everyone watching, Groves is not one of the cities that I represent. It is the city that I represent. And it is very vitally important to me to make sure that I am doing everything I can to make sure that you all have the tools to be successful so that our citizens and our fellow Texans don't have to feel that they are ever forgotten. So whatever I can do to do it, please let me know. And if I don't, please hold me accountable publicly, even from this guy's. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Out of six B will be the annual review of beer, uh, beer and wine permits and mixed beverage permits on premise consumption and consider renewal of the permits for 2024. I will make a motion in a second.
Make a motion to review the beer and wine permits and mixed beverage permits for the on premise consumption and consider renewal of the permits for 2024. Second.
Have a motion and a second for the, for the annual review of the beer and wine permits and mixed beverage permits for on premise consumption and consider renewal of the permits for 2024. Do you have any questions? I believe you get to make your presentation for it.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity to review the five businesses that have been permitted in 2023. And, uh, I'm going to walk up and grab this little PowerPoint assistant here.
Did they teach you how it worked?
We're going to find out. I will always talk the word. What you should have before you is five separate lists of calls for service as well as a crown of the PowerPoint presentation. We'll go through each together. Um, the five businesses that are under consideration today are the same five businesses that it had been for quite some time. That'd be Baytown Seafood, Columbus Club, Groves, Larry and Rita's Cajun Bar and Grill, Tony's Barbecue and Cletia's Italian Restaurant. Uh, there may have been an additional business sent out by accident. And I'll, I'll double check. Uh, it may have been oversight on my part, but we'll get to that when we, uh, when we cross that bridge. Uh, as we review these, this data, uh, I want to kind of give you some insight on how we come to these numbers. So, uh, as you're probably aware, as we are dispatched to different businesses or as we originate calls ourselves, uh, sometimes you use a landmark, an address. Sometimes when someone calls from a business specifically, and then even then, sometimes when our dispatch enters these data points, you know, 4800 Twin City Highway, for example, won't show up under 4800 Twin City. So, uh, we have to look at each of these addresses in a number of ways to pull up all these, all of these different calls for service. But one thing I do want to stress very, very clearly is when we did review each and every one of these calls for service, we did not see a single violation, uh, that would warrant any type of problems with the, uh, the selling or the providing of alcohol in reference to these calls. Uh, this indicates that most of the companies that are, uh, that have these permits or at all actually are in a very high level of compliance and, uh, should be considered for 2024 as well. So the first one we're going to look at is 4800 Twin City Highway, Baytown Seafood. There should be a two-page list in front of you. And though that list is long, uh, you'll notice that many of these are traffic stops that ended in its location. Uh, some of these are, uh, calls for service that actually originated in Port Arthur, but that was used as a landmark to get us to the scene. So as you'll look at those, uh, any questions about any of those? Total of 19 calls for service, uh, under varying, uh, several different types of calls, but none that, that were a, a result of a sale or the consumption of alcohol on the premise. Next, we have Columbus Club of Groves. And this is a list with two specific calls of service for the year 2023. And again, as you can see there, no reference to alcohol consumption, providing of alcohol as a cause for concern. Next, we have Larry and Rita's Next Occasion Bar and Grill. You'll see that list as well, five calls for service. And again, you'll see different numbers and that's why I prefix it with that idea of how we pull these. Uh, the list that you have in front of you is the actual list of those calls for service. So though you see just one of 911 Open Line, one for Flag Down and one for reckless driver. Uh, those were the only ones specifically called to this business. All the others used it as a reference or a landmark. So when you go to that actual call for service that you review, what actually transpired in this call, it had nothing to do with the business. No concern at Larry and Rita's. This one was added by mistake, oversight on my part. Sam Shiny does not have a permit, uh, though it could still be considered in the future. Uh, as you can see, there were no alcohol related calls there either. And then last, I'm sorry, second to last, we had Tony's Barbecue. Two calls for services here. One was, you know, an accident and one was a disturbance. Uh, it actually was spawning from a different location, but the disturbance ended there. So again, no reference to, uh, consumption or sale of alcohol at that location. For a Cletia's Italian Village, not a single call for the year 2023 at that location. And so again, just to repeat those takeaways, zero calls for service at these businesses. Uh, very high level of compliance. Any questions at all as y'all reviewed these calls for service?
So you're recommending that they be renewed, their licenses be renewed for 2024?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, no other questions. Well, on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Proton McGowan, aye. Councilmember Canitas, aye. Councilmember Oliver, aye. Councilmember Dugis, aye. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have seven A, consider and approve an amendment to chapter 27 Utilities, Article Two, Rates and Charges, Section 27 dash 26.1, the link one account procedure to authorize the city to perfect the lien against the real property and improvements as an alternative collection bill method to discontinuing service for multifamily dwellings with the link with utility bills.
I'll need a motion, second.
I make a motion, consider and approve the amendment to chapter 27 Utilities, Article Two, Rates and Charges, Section 27 dash 26.1, the link one account procedure to authorize the city to perfect a lien that for fact, that says perfect. Lien against the real property and improvements as a, uh, alternative collection method to discontinuing service for multifamily dwellings with the link with water bills.
Utility.
Uh, utility bills.
I see.
I have a motion and a second to consider and approve those amendments to chapter 27 Utilities, Article Two, Rates and Charges, Section 27 dash 26.1, the link one account procedure to authorize the city to perfect lien against the real property and improvements as an alternative collection method to discontinuing service for multifamily dwellings with the link with utility bills. Any questions?
An ordinance amended chapter 27 Utilities, Article Two, Rates and Charges, Section 47 dash 3.1. The link one account procedure of the code ordinances of the city of Groves, establishing utility liens and providing for the imposition of a lien on an owner's property other than homestead and specifically excluded rental property, providing for an appeal and release of lien process, providing for presumption against property owners failing to meet minimum standards specified in Part Two, technical ordinances, chapter 28, Buildings, Article Five, Dangerous Buildings and Structures, Section 28 dash 27 of the Code of Ordinances, providing for qualification, providing for publication by publishing a caption only, making bindings impact and providing for respect detail.
Mr. Arthur Cruz, you, uh, you gave me a pretty good explanation of, of why this was important. Would you mind giving us a brief rundown of the need for this?
Yes, sir. This, the genesis of this was, uh, we had a apartment complex that is delinquent on, uh, has a pretty good sized delinquency. Um, and what was built. And, uh, typically what we would do with the local water cans, we would ultimately, uh, disconnect service. Um, in this case, the water is included with the rent. And since the tenants of the property owner were not delinquent, we did not want to punish them. And so, uh, we looked at what our options were. Uh, in addition to terminating service, um, some talking with city attorney. Um, we felt like we needed to really kind of, uh, tune up our ability to place a lien on the property. And that's what's the order.
Mr. Monk, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you a question. Um, in this improvements, uh, so if a lien was to be placed on a facility, the multifamily dwelling unit, and, uh, they went to apply for building permits, would we be able to enforce the lien before applying permission to build? Since improvements are included in this?
Yeah.
So anytime they would be able to buy or sell the property or do any type of permitting, we would be able to enforce the law?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're saying this is primarily for apartment complexes?
Well, that's what led us down this, this road, but it would apply towards any non-homesteaded property.
Okay, so not single family dwellings?
No, it, it, it could.
It could?
As long as it was not a homesteaded property.
For instance, rental properties where the homeowner, the homeowner actually pays the bills as part of the rent. So you could file a lien on that and the, the person, I guess, similar to what we do now, I guess, with the, with the rental properties.
Right. There is an exclusion, uh, for a circumstance where the tenant has stated that they're going to accept responsibility for the bill, in which case we would not put the lien on the improvements and that's our distinction.
You could just turn the bill off and wrap it in that.
Correct.
How, how far is this to your place, uh, length? How many, how many bodies? Including, I don't have a message, including the penalties, they're around $20,000. What was this? A year or two or two years ago?
Now, they are paying their bill, they're not paying.
Their current, on their present bill.
The late stuff.
They're not paying the late fees and the like.
Has it been sold? Is that what's created this or not?
We, we need a bigger hammer.
I understand. They're the biggest trees. How, uh, how long this has gone on?
Perhaps the money is taking us this much time. We get to, we take this bid down there.
Uh, Mr. Monk, if you wouldn't mind, uh, just for the sake of, um, people in the audience in the city that are not reading this, could you please explain the, um, on page two, um, you've got utility liens, but you've got some, some instances here where it does not?
The exceptions are homesteaded properties. Uh, we have an exception for a property where service was connected to a tenant's name after notice by the property owner to the municipality that that tenant is going to pay. So we don't go after their interest. And then we have an exception for property with the lien with bills incurred by tenant of the property prior to the effective date of the ordinance. That's just something we need to be able to enforce.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Monk, are other surrounding cities, uh, cities doing the same thing?
There, they are, um, and this is authorized by state law, Local Government Code, Section 552.0025.
Any other questions?
Uh, would this have to come before city council again when you do place a lien on it? Does that have to come before city council?
It does. That's, that's exactly how it's had set out and, uh, to release the lien as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? No other questions. Well, on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Proton McGowan, aye. Councilmember Canitas, aye. Councilmember Oliver, aye. Councilmember Dugis, aye. Motion passes. I have eight. City manager, any voices?
Do you need a motion first?
Typically, it reads in the first, I believe.
Yeah.
Hey, invoices tonight, for DXI Industries reporting a water plant, $6,861.60. Uh, raw water. Um, Lower Neches Valley Authority, $36,966.82. Republic Services, uh, two invoices, one for October and one to November. First dumpster service. $9,267.10 and 8,609.70. South Tech Surveyors, final payment for pipe pressing program, engineering services. $14,261. And then South Tech Surveyors, uh, for payment of two for engineering services of wastewater treatment plant, $26,800. Total of $102,766.22.
Make a motion and a second.
Make a motion to consider approval for the invoice list of January 8th, 2024, a total amount of $102,766.22.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the invoice list for January 8th, 2024, for a total of $102,766.22. for a total of one hundred two thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Do we have any questions?
Um, is everything completed with the pipe bursting? We've got it all said and done?
All left.
This was the retained payment?
Correct.
How's the work going on with wastewater treatment plant?
Close that here. Hi.
It's, it's just the engineering right now. They're, uh, they're about to wrap this for the actual project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions. Well, on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro tem McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugis.
Aye.
Motion passes. Out of nine, council member comments?
Uh, I have a comment. Uh, I would just like to remind all the businesses in Grove that when you place, uh, when you want me to place an EDC application with the Grove's EDC, it is completely free. I, uh, I am president of the EDC and I handle your application. Uh, I take care of the entire process for you. I go over your invoices. I find out exactly what, um, what type of a reimbursement you can receive and it's all free. You do not need to pay anyone for those services. Um, my phone number is easy to find. My email address is on the website. You can call, uh, the city clerk and she can give you all that information. So don't pay someone to do that. It's free.
Any other council member comments?
Yes, I would like to say something in regards to, uh, the folks speaking earlier, uh, this evening about the war being and questioning if we could, um, I guess come up with some sort of, uh, process of speaking about this. Can we, uh, at some point, and it's gonna take some time, maybe put something together, uh, maybe maybe never explain, uh, some of what, uh, some of these questions are, uh. I've got questions. I mean, I've, I've been putting the same predicament as they have. Uh, and came down to the city hall and took care of. So, um, is there some kind of discussion that we could, we could have that would maybe help answer, uh, some of these questions that maybe we could, uh, put over there.
So I, I, I would like the system to work first. Um, none of this has been escalated to my office yet. Uh, none of these people have called me. I know some of them have talked to Lamar. And I don't know where else, uh, in the process they have gone to. Uh, every case is, is unique. Um, so I can't be down on any of these except the one that we found out about, uh, fire evening, that, uh.
Yeah, we, we need to. But, but does that stop us from having some, some sort of maybe put on the agenda that we can discuss this? And that way if people know about it, then
Sure.
maybe we can, we could get those folks that haven't got to you, uh, to hear their, their problems, uh.
I, I won't commit to the next meeting.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, because like you said, that's the time that, like Mr. Booker, uh, he, uh, the change order, change out, meter change out was done on December twentieth. That hasn't happened. It's because of holidays, but um, once that's done, then they'll, they'll take some readings for, uh, you know, a week or two to see the things are on track with previous readings or they're different. So somehow it'll take some time.
Any other council member comments? I hope everyone had a good holiday. Welcome to the new year and, uh, nobody else has anything else. We'll adjourn this meeting at five fifty-three. Thank you.